This is a candidate forum for the Orange County School Board Member District 3. All six candidates were invited to participate, and as you can see, we have five of them with us tonight. One candidate was not, Alyssa Ferentz, was not able to be here. We will be following the LIGS debate format. Each candidate will have a two-minute opening and a two-minute closing. They will have one and a half minutes to respond to the first three questions, and one minute to answer the questions which follow. Some of these questions are from you as audience members, or from other people in the community who have sent them to us and asked us to ask school board candidates these questions. At the end of the forum, we will give all of them a rousing round of applause. I am asking you not to applaud at every comment, because we will never get through very many questions that way. So let's hold the applause till the end for everybody. Our timekeeper, Jan Little, has little cards in front of her, and she is our official timekeeper. She will raise the cards when there is one minute left, 30 seconds left, and then stop. And when it comes up red for stop, we, Nina, we will cut you off at the pass, or with the cane, as Mr. Lynn suggested. Candidates drew cards to determine who will give the first opening statement and who will give the last closing statement. And we will now begin with our opening statements. And Ms. Murphy, you have the first opening statement for two minutes.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kyla Murphy. I am a school board candidate in District 3. I went to school at Weingard Elementary, actually here at Walker Middle School and Cypress Creek. I have two sons in District 3. And at the beginning of my son's educational journey in pre-K and kindergarten, I started to notice some inequities and some segregation that was going on, both our students with disabilities. So I began to fight hard in school for my sons to be included and have a sense of community at school. And through that, I developed a group called Orange County ESC Parent-to-Parent Alliance, where we go to meetings and support our children, parents, even teachers on our students' educational journeys. I've been to over 50 schools in the district and every single learning community. I'm very passionate about public education and feel that it should be a reflection of our community. It should be a safe haven for our students, where they feel included, and a springboard for them to live an independent and functional, happy life as possible. That is one of my priorities. My campaign is making sure that every student graduates with a plan, whether it's college, whether it's career and technical education, or whether it's community-based instruction for those students who need support within the community just to live independent lives. I've been working hard to get out in the community, to meet as many constituents as possible. I feel that we need a school board member that will be a voice on the board for students, teachers, and parents. And I look forward to working for District 3 and representing the community.
Ms. -- Mr. Smith, if you hold these close to your mouth, it gets much louder. Mr. Smith is next.
Thank you, ma'am. My name is Dennis Smith. Normally, I would speak to you extemporaneously, but at this point, this venue, I feel that I should read exactly what I wrote this morning. I've been led to do that. I believe in the practice of servant leadership. As a practicing servant leader, I want to give back to the community and to the school system that allowed me to share my knowledge for 30-plus years, and to help your kids and mine succeed academically, socially, and occupationally. I have the knowledge to tackle the school board issues that require my teaching and business experience. As an OCPS parent and grandparent, I want to ensure that as a board member, we are transparent and are held accountable. We must continue discovering ways to keep schools engaged and accessible. And I want to encourage the return of trade-type classes. We need builders, mechanics, plumbers, et cetera. These high-paying jobs require educations, core academic subjects, English, math, science, reading, social studies. Remember, there's a plethora of issues facing the board. Just some issues we might talk about tonight are school safety, skilled trade classes, hiring and retaining excellent teachers, and perhaps we'll talk about bullying. Lastly, here's my promise to you. I will return 20% of my school board salary back to the students in the form of scholarships as a startup to anywhere they want to go educationally. Thank you.
And now, Mr. Daniels.
Hi, everyone. My name is Michael Daniels. And just a little bit about me, I've been in central Florida for a little over 30 years. I've been in higher education for 20 years. I work at a state college as an administrator, and also do some teaching as well. I've been married for 20 years. My wife is a teacher right here in District 3. She's won Teacher of the Year twice, so very proud of her. And we have two children that graduated in 2019 and 2020. And that kind of starts why I'm running. Throughout my kids' time in Orange County public schools, they had the inside track. They had someone who worked for the school and someone who worked in higher education guiding them. And even with that advantage, it was a struggle. I would also talk to parents, whether I volunteer or I was coaching girls softball. And I was shocked that a lot of parents didn't know a lot of the options that they had. And so that got me thinking and focusing on what can I do to make it better? I volunteered with SAC at Mid-Florida, Orange Technical College it is now, and middle schools all over the county. I've mentored, and I just feel called to run as school board member here in District 3. I have a lot of thoughts and ideas. I'm a servant leader. I'm very much engaged with the community. I love meeting and talking with new people. And if given the opportunity, I will represent District 3 to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Mr. Lynn is next.
Good evening. My name is Robert A. Lynn. And I'm running for the school board District 3 as a write-in candidate. So you won't see posters of me or anything like that. But I'm actually in the general -- I'm in the actual general election, not the primary. Though I wanted to make sure everyone understood that. So I'll be a write-in candidate for the general election. Okay, that's the rules. That's the way they're set up. I've been in -- I'm probably the longest individual resident in this county, 60 years. I came here in the spring of 1963 with my parents. So I went to Tanshill Park Elementary, then St. John Vianney, then Stonemall Jackson for two years, and then on to Bishop Ford. I was drafted, went into the Marine Corps. Sort of my time overseas got out, attended FDU, UCF. So I'm not going to lose my education. If you want, I'll be able to tell you about them. So I also have advanced schooling in the US Marine Corps as well, different schools. I believe in this, is that the parents rule the system. They're the taxpayers. We are civil servants. Okay, that's the way it is. I expect transparency. I expect truthfulness out of everyone. Okay, you want to know everything, I'm going to be truthful with you. I believe in higher salaries for teachers with benefits. I do not believe in any salaries for school board members. That is ridiculous. Okay, we work for you. It's simple as that. I believe in school safety. I believe in, like I said, high wages and benefits for teachers and support staff. I also believe in veterans' preference, which I helped in the state of Florida with a group of Vietnam Veterans of America, the group up in Tallahassee during the early 90s. Naming of schools, there are other things as well. But I assume that they're going to be in the questions, and thank you.
Ms. Peña.
Hello, hola, buenos dias, merhaba. My name is Suzanne Marie Peña. I come to you this evening as an educator and a parent. I have been an educator in the K through 12 and higher education setting for over 20 years. I began my career in education as a volunteer and substitute teacher and worked my way up to classroom teacher, working with students with exceptional abilities as well as emerging bilinguals. My experience spans from classroom teacher to instructional coach, building administrator, and district administrator in Title I schools. I am not a politician. I'm an educator, a working mom, and an advocate. My commitment to students, families, and educators has never stopped. I am proud to have brought a multimillion-dollar grant to Orange County Public Schools to provide professional development and 18 graduate free credits to teachers working with emerging bilinguals across the district. But my advocacy work has not stopped there, as I continue to advocate for students, their families, and educators at the state level as the president-elect of the Florida Association for Bilingual Education. Furthermore, I continue to work in the classrooms as a trainer of teachers nationwide. My passion for working with students, families, and educators is not something by proxy, but is at the core of who I am. I am Suzanne Marie Peña, an education insider, a working mom, and advocate. Thank you. Gracias, merci, shukron.
Okay, we are now going to have the first moderator question, and we will go in alphabetical order. And you have a minute and a half for these. So, Mr. Daniels, you will be the first one up. The question is, why are you running for this elected position? What are the two most compelling issues on which, if elected, you feel you can make a difference?
Thank you. Why I'm running, because over the last 20-plus years in this county, working with various schools, I see a number of problems. My wife is a teacher. I see day in and day out how she's not appreciated. Teachers all over the district are not appreciated. And I definitely want to get involved and do something about that. That's why I'm running. Students, you know, my children kind of got forced into AP classes. And at first, I thought it was a great experience, a great opportunity. And then I learned the hard way, like many of you, if you had kids going to high school, that's not necessarily the best place for them to be and that there are other options. So I really got focused on advocating for my children, and now I want to advocate for families all over Orange County. The two most important things that I'm looking to do is engaging parents, educating them, letting them know what their options are, going to the community, pulling people together. The other thing I want to do is help teachers, not just with compensation, but just overall morale. And I told you, my wife has taught for a number of years. I tend to hang out with a lot of teachers. And I will tell you, there is a huge morale problem, but you all know that. There's a lot of ways we can solve that. Pay is the obvious option. But the other option is giving teachers more opportunity to make decisions in their school as opposed to having things forced down their throat. And as a school board member, I will fight for them.
Mr. Lynn, you're next.
Yes, the reason why I'm running. Yes, the reason why I'm running here are. Okay, I'm sorry. You're still thinking about COVID, you know. But like I said, my family came here 60 years ago. So I think I've been a resident longer than anyone in here that's physically in here now. I've seen it go from a county of almost, not backwards, but a county that really moved into the 21st century very quickly. And the other, I just feel that, you know, I have taught schools as well as a substitute teacher in Orange and Seminole County. So, and I still teach in Seminole County. So I bring that experience to you so I'm not walking into an area that I don't know anything about. But the two compelling cases, number one, teachers' pay, benefits, and morale. Without that, if you don't start building it up and start paying more money, then you're going to lose, you're going to have to turn around big time. And the second thing is school safety. Okay, the school safety is extremely important, and it has to be done, but it has to be done in a very, I would say, a very unique and specified approach to it. Law enforcement, with the help of law enforcement as well.
Ms. Murphy.
What I did, for me to run, was the attack I feel that public education is currently under right now, and working in the community to support teachers and students shoulder to shoulder at the school level. I think it's very important that our community has a voice for parents, teachers, students on the board that remember who they work for, working for the community and the constituents and not the district, so that we have someone on the board that can represent us. I also, another reason I wanted to join is so I could work hard on inclusion and make sure there's more equity in the school and representation for all students. It's easy to say, you know, I live over on the Central Florida Parkway, but we have students right now in District 3 that live in 10 hotels on Orange-Boston Trail that we need to be thinking about. Every student having a voice, every family having a voice. It's not their problem. It's our problem as a community. Thank you.
So why am I running? I've been an educator for over 20 years. I'm still in the classrooms. I see day in, day out what's happening. I worked in OCPS. First job in OCPS was at Colonial. Then I worked at Phyllis Sweetly in Apocrypha. I worked in Title I schools my entire career, and I've also worked in higher ed. Noticing how the pandemic has, not even doubled, this is, has magnified the problems and the issues that we have within our school systems and that need to be addressed in multiple ways. Being an advocate, not only for students, their families, and also educators. That is why I'm running. Now, two of my top issues, I have many, but two of my top issues are, one is bullying and mental health, because we need, we need mental health. We need more of that in our schools. And then the second one is teacher and educational staff retention and recruitment. I'm a teacher. I'm a union member still. And I know what it means to be in the classroom. And so we need to have their backs.
Pretty much covered a lot of things in the opening statement. I was an executive vice president of GTI in Melbourne when God spoke and he said, "I want you to quit and teach." I said, "Excuse me?" 30 of the most blissful years of my life. It was incredible. I've taught anywhere from rock stars, you know them very well, I won't mention it, to the average kids, down to those who are incarcerated for murder for life. I've seen the gamut. But it has been incredibly wonderful to watch your kids, to watch mine, all of a sudden go, "For the first time in my life, I understand!" And I get phone calls from parents. "What did you do to my kid?" "They understand math." "I taught algebra, geometry, trig." "High school by day, college by night. I coached in between 6:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night." "I wouldn't trade it." "I work for you." "And yes, I'll work for free. I don't need the money." "I've never asked. You don't have to give it." "I know how to stretch the dollar to the eagle's screens." The number one thing parents tell me about, school safety. Number two, they want to see some skilled trades or shop classes brought back. Number three, hiring and retaining of excellent teachers. And I have a great plan. In the military, I worked for a place called Transfer Point. When you get out of the service, where are you going to go? The best place. They've got the great skills, the experience of leadership, flexibility, adaptability, understanding, and appreciation of diversity. It'll help them excel as teachers. Thank you.
Okay, for our next question, we will start with Mr. Lynn and go around the table. And Mr. Daniels will be last. And this is the question. Name a strength, a weakness, an opportunity, and a threat. Strength, weakness, opportunity, and threat, a SWAT, for the school board. A strength, a weakness, an opportunity, and a threat for the school board. Threat.
Question, can I go with, do you say what opportunity you want to be?
It's a standard SWAT question. Of what do you see as a strength, a weakness, an opportunity, and a threat for the school board? You need to use your mic.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought it was you talking about us personally.
No.
Okay. The strength as a school board brings is that, you know, you have numbers here, but we're only as good as the input from, you know, the voters themselves, the taxpayers. You're the strength. We're just, you know, the chain and that link, okay? You have to let us know what you want. I don't care how, what, how silly it may sound or anything else, you know, give it to us. Okay? Opportunities to turn weaknesses into opportunities for everyone to learn. Okay, whether it be going to college, whether it be going to vocational education. Okay, we have to, we have to start stressing that, that there is more than one alternative, that you don't have to go. Everybody, everyone's not made for college. You can go to the vocation education and do just as well. Okay? Weakness. I would say that in relation to selection, selection of teachers. And the last one would be threat, money. And we've got to look for money, everybody, you know, taxes and things of that nature.
Ms. Murphy.
I think a strength is the board is our community. We have a diverse community that comes together, and we can work well as a team. I think one of our weaknesses currently is the lack of knowledge of inclusion in all of our community members and what their needs are. There is a division. I've seen it myself with my sons on segregated field trips in self-contained classrooms where they have no exposure to their school community. And I think that also is an opportunity for us to come together. I think the threat currently right now is the misinformation and the attack on our teachers, that we need to, as a community, come together to defend our educators and create a collaborative and cohesive environment, because their work environment is our students' learning environment.
So I would say a strength that the board has at the moment is the way that they navigated the pandemic. They had the HUSPA to actually do what was right for our children. Now, there is a weakness. There are current bills out there, which we all know, we're very well aware, right? That are serving as threats as well to public education. And it is an opportunity for us as a board, right? To take on the realm. And instead of looking at these laws and their vagueness, actually putting directives, because we could do that, right? As a board, the board can put directives. We have to follow the law. But we can put directives that actually provide an exemplary, safe, nurturing environment for all. And I got to underline that, caps it, bold it, whatever you need to, okay? For all students. And that is what I believe. Thank you.
The strength, I know the board members. They used to be my bosses. I've known all the past ones also. Cohesiveness, working together, parents, teachers, the board, all of us together. They do have that, working together. Not always, but it is a strength. The weakness, there's a lot of arguments going on back behind the stage that you don't see. And there's some concern about bullying. Like I said, the arguments about how and what specifically to write, to write down, to have the attorney there present saying, "Well, you can say this, but you can't say that." The opportunity, to hear you. I love it when my parents used to come to the classroom frequently. The opportunity is to hear you folks. So please, come to the school board. Thousands of my parents out there, I've been inviting when I get on board. Come see us. Be appropriate. The threat, the threat to the school board will be you not getting involved appropriately. Thank you.
Okay, so strength, I have it as the diversity of the board and the county. You know, when you run the ninth-largest school district in the nation, there's a lot that you get with that. A lot of school districts actually get feedback from Orange County, and they look for Orange County for guidance or ideas on how to win their county. So I see our board is very strong in that fashion. A weakness, we haven't been able to figure out how to engage our teachers in terms of pay, in terms of policies. That's an area that we've got to get better. Opportunity, I do think we have an opportunity to engage those teachers, engage our students. We have so many great programs, whether it's at the Mid-Florida or Orange Technical College, some of our magnet schools. But a lot of our parents don't know. A lot of our students don't know. So the opportunity is we have to do a better job selling what we do well. I've seen some communities where they like to say, "This charter school is so much better." Well, one of the reasons why they do that is because we haven't done a good job selling how good we are. That's our opportunity. Our threat are the policies that you guys see come down from our Capitol on a daily basis, it seems like. People who aren't educators running schools. That is our threat.
Thank you. We're going to make a little adjustment in that with five of you answering the questions, I'm trying to get through some more questions that are on out. This time, we will start with, Mr. Lynn started the last one. So this one will start with Ms. Murphy. Okay, and here is the question. How do you define safe schools? And what are your plans to provide safe schools for all children and employees?
I think safe schools are where the community, everyone is welcomed in the school and are not bullied, and not worried about being judged or being hurt or harmed at school. I think it's also important to have safety measures in school that protect our students, that we're working collaboratively with our school resource officers, our licensed mental health counselors at the district, our guidance counselors, our teachers, and all hands on deck. So we know when something is going on, and we're aware of it. And as a community, we work together to ensure the safety of the school is protected. I think it's also very important that, being that we only have 34 licensed mental health counselors in the ninth-largest district in the U.S., that we really need to look at expanding that. Do we have the resources available to students at the school level that they may need, especially after the pandemic? I am a psychiatrist, mental health nurse practitioner, and have seen the desperate need for those services.
How do you define safe schools? And what are your plans to provide safe schools for all children and employees? And what are your plans to provide safe schools for all children and employees?
So I'm going to talk about experience, right? Being a, being a teacher in Title I schools, I know what it is to go into lockdown because there's a shooting. I know what it is to hide because the bullets are flying and there's a bullet that got, that went through the window. So knowing that, and it makes me teary-eyed because I still remember it to this day. And it wasn't once, wasn't twice, it was multiple times. So I understand what it means to have a safe school for all students. So looking, it's not only just looking at, let's go and hide under a desk or in a safe corner. It's actually everybody needs to come together and find the right measures for what's going on right now, like bullying. And not only that, but thank you, Ms. Murphy. Yes, mental health, it is unbelievable that we only have 34 mental health.
Time's up. One minute goes fast, guys, okay?
You want another 30 seconds?
No. It's all good, thank you, thank you. It's all good.
Bullying is an issue. Thirty-year teacher, I've experienced that quite a bit. And here's the 10, 5, 2. You get 10 days when you bully somebody. Administration says, well, we can't handle that. We can't do that. Doesn't look good for us. I've been up against the administrators. The kid will expect five, but actually they'll get two and the kid will be right back in the classroom again. Yes, I've taken guns away from kids before. My very first year of teaching. I found the gun in the backpack. Someone else found the bullets. I understand what's going on. You've got a responsibility. You don't teach the kid responsibility if he's only going to get two and he deserves 10. Bullying's got to stop. These kids want to be held accountable. They've told me they want to be held accountable. And for the assault, they told me they're not going to do it. We love them anyway. Security systems. I used to be in the security business, working for GTI as the executive. Network control centers, data line analyzers. We can make the schools secure. We can, we can stop this. It is simple. But we like sharing.
We're sharing and sharing.
I like it. Sheriff, Sheriff, is that okay? Would you want us to fire him? Safe schools, you know, and simply put, it's when you as a parent feel comfortable taking your kid to school, dropping them off, and not worrying throughout the day is something happening. That's what a safe school means to me. So how would I address safe schools? Looking at the budget, wherever we can add extra law enforcement officers, because we get a very good discounted rate as with SROs, I'd want to add them. I'd also want to look at the facilities, the structural facilities. One of the things I learned recently is that we don't really aggressively pursue a lot of grant funding for infrastructure in terms of the safety of our schools. That's something I would want to definitely focus on. And the other thing that I think has been mentioned a couple of times is mental health counseling. You know, sometimes your biggest threat is within the school. And so we've got to listen to kids. We've got to act on their concerns so we can identify where those threats are within the school. And that's disciplines attached to that, too.
I need those 30 seconds.
Okay. On school safety, I can speak from experience. I was sub, when I was sub at Seminole County, I was there at the shooting at Seminole High School. So, plus being in the Marine Corps in Vietnam, I mean, been shot at too. So I can tell you. But school safety is where I would do, a number of decades ago, Orange County used to have the sheriff's deputy or OPD used to have an officer that lived actually on the grounds. They had a trailer with their vehicle out there. They lived on the grounds, okay? Mental health counseling is needed, more of it's needed. Because a teacher can only wear so many hats. A teacher is to teach, they're not mental health counselors, okay? The other thing is I would hire qualified veterans to reinforce the sheriff's department and OPD, let them carry weapons as long as they went through the carry permits they have. Actually, if you get veterans preference, you put qualified veterans to work. Okay? Simple as that.
Wait, wait, but you got a question?
All right.
I got to give you a new question. Your first this time. This year, the Florida Legislature created the Charter School Review Commission. How do you see this unfolding in Orange County public schools?
So I, I work with a lot of schools throughout the country. Some of my teaching experience started in New York City, the largest school district in the country. I worked in Harlem. And I saw how charter schools took over public education, good schools, right? It was taking money from Peter to give to Paul, right? If I didn't put you in the same, sorry. And I saw how it was so detrimental to public education. And so it, when I started seeing more and more charter schools down here, it's concerning because I've seen the effects that it can have to public education. Public education is amazing. It's awesome. I can't put it any other way, all right? And taking the resources from public schools to give to charter schools? Nah-uh.
Done, done.
That, I give that.
Charter schools are independent public schools operated by a nonprofit organization. They hire their own teachers, design their own academic programs. They control their own finances. Concern should be addressed, of course, to the school principal or the governing board. The OCPS school board does not oversee the day-to-day functions of charter schools. Each charter school has their own board of directors and they make their own decisions. A lot of parents that I've talked to said, please, just give us the money. Let us send our kid where we want to. That's been a rallying cry for a lot of parents. I yield my last 10 seconds. I'll give it to you, girl, take it. You can tell that we love each other all, all of us.
Okay, as far as the Charter School Review Commission, part of my concern is this is another instance where local control is being usurped by the state. You know, as voters, you elected your school board to oversee the schools, and the charter schools are part of that job. And so that's the job of the Orange County School Board, is to oversee charter schools as well. So if I understood the question, what's my feeling, my, my thought on it? I'm against it. That's why you elect school board members to oversee charter schools. Now, I'm not going to bash charter, I'm a public school guy, so I love public schools. You know, I think we should benchmark charter schools. Maybe a few of them are doing some great things. Maybe that's where we need to look and learn and steal some ideas. What can we, what can we do with our schools? But at the end of the day, we need to support our public schools and the charter schools need to be overseen by local school board members.
I'm in complete agreement with what Dr. Daniels stated, that, you know, local control, we control. Funds go directly to us, you know, we need to watch over. But I also believe that you parents, you're the ones that have the final say-so in your child or children's education, okay? You get to choose where they want to go, okay? It's your decision, okay? And that's the way it should be. That's one of the foundations of America's choice in this case. You know, I can't say it any better than that. It's just that I believe in that. Even though I went to a Catholic school, many good things about Catholic schools. Great, you know, the camaraderie. I'm having my 50-year reunion this year at Bishop Moore. So I mean, but the charter schools, no, I don't believe that they're taking, they are taking some money away, but we have to look at as school board members, we have to start thinking outside the box, too. Okay? That's what we got to do. The traditional ways, in many cases, are not working.
I believe with charter schools, we do need local oversight. We need to monitor the for prof, for profit charter schools that are using public dollars to purchase buildings and then reselling them for a profit. We need to have that local oversight locally and not have so many hands in, in the pot or cooks in the kitchen, if you will. That's where it becomes convoluted and we don't have the local knowledge and then the local oversight to actually control what is going on in our district. I, I'm concerned with letting and having additional oversight at the state level versus the local level and that being taken away. The impact that it would have on our public schools, the impact that it would have on our community and the pop-up charters that would start to converge and move in. I think it's vital that we maintain local control.
I'm waiting.
I'm trying to turn it on again.
You're good.
Okay. Our next question, again, one minute. How would you improve academic achievement at the district's low-performing schools?
And answer it really easily. We talked about it already in terms of hiring the right teachers. That's it. Basic, basic principle. And I agree with my Vietnam veteran brother here that they're looking for a job when they come out and they're some of the best of the best. And that's not just any job. You have to be called upon this. This is the job that God calls you up to do. And it's not for the money. We didn't do it for the money. We're not going to do it for the money. But academically, I think I'd start, talked about that in my opening statement also. We can accomplish it. It is simplistic. Let's not make it any harder than it is. We can hire the right people at the right time. Maybe even some of you out there.
You guys are getting good.
Okay, all right, all right.
They got it down now.
All right, so how we make improvements in the low-performing schools? You know, it comes down to first teachers. Yes, we, we need to hire great teachers, but, you know, we've all seen, you can hire the best teacher you want. If you don't support them, they're going to leave in a year or two. And that's what's happening right now. So when we hire that great teacher, we have to support them. That's so important. We have to have the right administrator that inspires the, the teachers. They got to feel that they've got some skin in the game, that their, their opinion matters in the school. And then we've got to bring the community into that school. That's so key. And I think that's one of the biggest roles that a school board member can do, is involve the local community, involve parents, get volunteer teams, get businesses coming in, get them involved. Once you do that, you're going to transform that school and teachers are actually going to love being their students, are going to have pride because they're going to see people that they know that look like them volunteering and engaging them and helping them as well.
In regard to low-performing schools, you know, it's always been to solve a problem of any low-performing school, well, we'll change the teachers, you know, change the teachers. That means we'll get rid of them and hire new teachers. So the same way with administrators. It's like changing the chairs on the Titanic, okay? We have to sit there. It's nothing wrong with the school or the students. There's something, you know, it's something we have to do and we have to learn how to retain teachers. That's very important because we're competing with a market out there that's going to pay more, you know, twice or even three times as much as the starting pay of a teacher. Believe me, okay? They are going to do it. And we have to, they have to, when they, at the end of their day, they sit back and the teacher says themselves, why am I still here, you know, making this much money? And I can make three times out there. But, you know, out there, they get the respect. But, you know, everything falls with getting back to, you know, teaching, excuse me, respecting the teachers, getting them the morale, okay? That's what I would do.
For our low-performing schools, I think it's important that we look at our reading proficiency rates in the schools in our district. Also, for our teachers, having to stick with CRMs or community curriculum resource materials and not having autonomy in the classroom to be able to utilize books and materials that they know works for their students. Working with our community partners like the Read Foundation, looking at evidence-based methodology for reading instruction is critical for some of our readers in schools that are low performing. Another thing we need to look at is our support professionals, our paraprofessionals, and having innovative ways for them to be supported so they can become teachers, too. They're in the classrooms, they're working with our students day in and day out. And as a parent of students with disabilities, I've seen paras leave for that, lack of opportunity and the lack of pay and would be amazing teachers. Also, looking at our reading comprehensive plan in our district where zero dollars are spent on professional development.
So I have worked in low-performing schools. I have administered and worked in Title I schools my entire career. And I know that this is not a, an issue that gets resolved with a one, one-size-fits-all kind of solution. It's a multifaceted solution that we need. We have amazing teachers already in OCPS, but you know what? We need to support them. We need to properly fund all our schools equally, right? Whether if it's in Lake Nona or whether if it's in Boone or whether if it's in University or Colonial or whatever the case may be, we need to make sure that our schools are well-funded. Resources, support have to be in place as well. And we also have to, I agree, having that collaboration with the community is key to raising our schools. Thank you.
Okay, we're back to the front of the table with Mr. Daniels. Question. If necessary, where would you cut the school's budget? What would you consider off-limits for budget cuts and why?
Well, I definitely wouldn't cut teacher salaries. That, that would be off-limits for sure. We can't keep teachers as it is. So that's, that would be off-limits. You know, I, I'd have to look at some efficient ways maybe we could use instructional material. You know, honestly, I, I almost, I almost reject the question in the sense that, do you, why not just fight to keep every dollar that you have? I don't, I don't know that I can, I don't know that I can advocate cutting anything at this point.
I think the question may be directed more towards where do you reallocate the resources that you've got than a cut per se?
Well, then, you know what?
That's what they were trying to get at.
I, I would tell you this, when you look at the budget, the proposed budget, and I know this would be problematic, but, you know, those charter schools are pulling significant funds out of the public coffers. And so I do a good, hard look at that 1% that goes towards capital of charter schools. Where is that going? And I'd take a look at that first.
Okay, first and foremost, the first one right off my head, it's not, it's not a no-brainer either. It's eliminate the salary for all the school board members. They're making 48, estimated $48,000 a year. You can actually buy, get, hire seven new teachers with that, okay? Think about that. Do we need a scare, do we, do we need a school chair person? No, we don't. For decades, we, we did not operate with a school chair person. We don't need that. This is where you start cutting. Cut from the top and then come down. You better seriously think about that because it's going to go up and up and up. In some places in the United States, they have laws in states that ban any payment to school board members. The vast majority of school boards across the United States is a fact. Do not get paid any money at all. They see it as a community service. And they should be restricted to one term, not 12 years, one term. Because then you can have turnover. We have new play, new faces and new ideas.
I think that it would be important to look at a current, the current budget and audit dollar for dollar to see where money is being allocated and where there is duplication. For instance, when COVID hit, we used some of our dollars for SIPs, which is already a reading assessment that has purchased and is at the district in our curriculum instructional department. So I think that would be important to take a look at any type of duplication and look at reallocating that. For some of the technology, and I already, I've seen duplication on our reading comprehensive plan as well. plan as well as in our school budget, and it's something that's not accessible for a lot of our students, and it's not an effective tool to assess their proficiency and their data collection. So I think it would be important to look at the programs that we're using, making sure that they're evidence-based, making sure that they are working, and reallocate that to something that would work, that is proven to improve reading proficiency rates, invest in our teachers.
So I have to agree with a few of the members here. So, yeah. The first thing that I would not do would be touch teacher salary, okay? I know how much a teacher makes, because I made it the same way. But you know what? I would look at the assessments. We give way too many assessments in OCPS, and that is something that we need to look at to see, like, things like I Ready or such, you know? Do we need that? Is that something that is actually benefiting the students, the learning that has to happen in the classroom? So that is somewhere where we can start seeing, hey, we don't need that. We've got enough testing coming from state. So that's where I would start looking at.
Bad thing about going last is everybody said everything I was going to say. Yes, I agree with my colleagues, absolutely. But our salaries will be high, $48,000. Most places don't work for that at all. They're free, they're volunteered, and that's the way it should be. Like I said, I'd be willing to give up 20% of my salary back to the students. 20% goes in the church, 60% goes to other anonymous people that I will not tell you about, that I take care of. So I'm going to be working for free anyway. Yeah. Mental health, I agree, I concur, absolutely. There's a lot of kids out there that are suffering, and unless we actually have the budget in front of us, folks, we're not going to be able to tell you specifically. So it's kind of a loaded question. I still love you anyway, but unless we have the budgets in front of us, it can be kind of difficult. But once I'm on the school board, please come see me, please tell me what you think we should cut also.
Okay. We've been at it, and you all have a two-minute closing, which means at least 10 more minutes if the audience, I'd like to do one more question on a one-minute round and then give them the two-minute closing, because it'll take us till about 7:45. So the last question, and Mr. Lynn, you get it first. This before your closing, right? And you get, you are first on the closing.
Okay. Do we have a one-minute question?
One minute, one minute now, and then the two-minute when we come back. Please define social-emotional learning and explain why you are for or against it in schools.
Well, I've thought about this, you know, not as much as the safety issue and the retention of teachers and payroll, but...
Close your team mouth, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. Social, you have, you have some, you have students that, again, the SEL, as it's called, acronym, deals with more mental health than anything else. Social, you have, as in any human beings, we are social. We like to talk, interact with each other, emotions, it's human, okay? Love, hate, okay? And learning. The thing is, is that the, you have to concentrate on more mental health counseling and getting students to come, open up more and to become more, I guess, to become more human again, to act like people.
I am for social and emotional learning. As a mother with two students with a disability, social and emotional learning is a part of their IEP and part of them to be able to be successful and interact with their peers at school. So I think it's vital for every student to have that experience and have those tools starting young, to be able to function within the community and be able to practice acceptance, kindness, self-regulation, especially in students where federally it's written in their IEPs that they must receive instruction on social and emotional learning, social skills instruction, sometimes daily. So there's no way around it. We are obligated to address those students' needs, so they're be able to access their education and be able to be included in school.
So I gather that you already know whether I'm for or against social-emotional learning by now. So heck yeah, I am for social-emotional learning. At the end of the day, we've got to remember it's Maslow before Bloom's, okay? We have to show empathy, we have to learn empathy, we have to learn how to see other people's perspectives and lenses, okay? Showing, we have to teach that, and that doesn't come by, you know, just balls from the sky. We've got to teach that at a very young age, and taking that away is detrimental to the future of our students and for their safety.
Kids come from different backgrounds. 30 years in classes, yes, I know, different socioeconomic backgrounds. You've got the rich kids, the poor kids, the medium kids. You've got the ones that I've taught that are blind, and a lot of blind students, a lot of that nervous tics, tremendous stress, crying. Like I said, they get really emotional, they'll jump up in the middle of class, they get excited. My granddaughter even had an IEP, Individual Education Plan, learning disability. I developed something when I first started, actually it was developed already, I just took it, because one of the things that they say when you're a teacher, steal, 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 all the great ideas are out there, don't reinvent the wheel. Team accelerated instruction. You've got a high-level learner, a low-level learner, and two middle-level learners working in that box together. It worked phenomenally well. I saw kids from those socioeconomic, emotional learning-type situations rise above it, and they come to you at the end of the year, and that's when you get all your good gifts. They love it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Social-emotional learning, basically, that's all the good stuff that we get when we're in class, other than what's in the textbook. That's the self-awareness, that's the confidence, that's the being able to assess your other students in the class, be able to read them. That's what you get with SEL, and that's why it's so important. And there are a number of studies that indicate that if you're good with SEL, you're going to be successful, not just in school, but in life, with your careers, and so it is a no-brainer that we need to do everything possible to promote SEL in the schools.
Okay. Now, they are each going to get a two-minute closing statement. Again, we drew cards, and Mr. Lynn, you are the first closing statement.
Okay, thank you. I want to remind you that I'm all for the public, you know, you run the system, okay? You pay taxes into it. We don't know what to do until you come in front of us. The primary mission of a school board, primary, is the budget. Everything else is secondary, okay? It's the way it is. That's what we concentrate on. I'm going to tell you what I'm going, one of the few first things I'm going to do is require that the school board members don't take any salary at all. They're committed to one term, that's it. I'm committed to teacher salaries with benefits, and I mean real benefits, okay? Right now, inflation is running at 9%, and it's going to go up. Pay should equal that, when in COLA, it's called cost of living allowance. It should equal, pay raise should equal the COLA. It's only fair, okay? The other thing is, I believe in parental choice, but with the parental choice comes parental responsibility, remembering that parents, they're your children. I don't call them kids. Kid is a young billy goat, by the way. They're a student. That's their profession until they leave, until they reach the age that they graduate, you know, they move on. I believe in vocational schools. Not everyone's made for college, but you don't run up a huge debt, okay? I believe in safety in school. Yeah, yeah. Fortunately, we've got it up. Hello?
No.
Thank you very much. Another one is safety. I believe in that 100%, but it should work with both law enforcement as well as the community of the school itself as well. Veterans preference, I'm for it. I'm 100% for it. Veterans should be, qualified veterans should be hired first, as well as, I also believe in the naming of schools. We don't have one school named after Orange County's Lone Medal of Honor recipient, Larry Smithley. We don't have a school for Veterans High School either.
No, this time, it's Mr. Daniels.
All right. First, I want to thank everyone for this great forum and everyone that's here. I wish the cafeteria was full of parents that were engaged, because, you know, our education, our kids' education is very important. You know, I think back to my first opportunity, my first time volunteering in Orange County Public Schools. I was at Pine Hills Elementary. My wife just got her first teaching job, and they were going on a field trip, and they needed chaperones. Well, guess what? No chaperones came. So my wife asked me to, you know, can you help me? And so that started my engagement, involvement with Orange County Public Schools and volunteering and serving. Seeing those kids, seeing that there weren't a lot of parents that were engaged with them, and that kind of got me focused on how can I serve students? How can I serve our teachers? And I've done that pretty much over the last 20-plus years, whether it's mentoring students directly, whether it was being on sackboards, whether it was being a volunteer coach for a softball team, whatever was asked, I've been very passionate about, and I want to support Orange County Public Schools, and that's why I'm running to be a school board member of District 3. We have a lot of challenges. Some of those challenges, you know, we've got people trying to ban books out of libraries. I am absolutely against that. I'm appalled at that whole idea. We've got teachers feeling like they're not valued. We need an advocate on the school board. We need eight of them to stand up and support our teachers and take care of our students. We forget those are our customers. Those are who we're trying to serve, our students, and so we need to focus on the students and listen to them. We don't do that enough. If you elect me, I will do that and serve the community to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Mr. Smith, all the way down.
Thank you all for being here. I'm used to usually having a full house, but I'm glad you're here. It shows tremendous amount of what needs to be done while you're being here. As your school representative, I want the best for all the students, no matter their race or their background. I will work hard to create classrooms where students feel they can learn, make mistakes, feel supported, help their peers, and pursue their dreams. Let's eliminate the rhetorical confusion and bring back stability. You know, you cannot give a student aspirin? You can't. But you can talk to them about changing their sex and their identity in fourth grade. Sex education should be age-appropriate. The mass majority of my fellow teachers say they are not indoctrinators. They stay on their subject, and they attempt to integrate the curriculums like I taught them to do as a peer teacher. Some institutions who shout loudly don't always reflect the voters' values. The well-educated majority will speak louder with their vote, and I want to leave you with this. I've taught for 30 years. You want to retain something as a teacher? This is a visual. You need to be able to see it, to hear it, to say it, to write it, and then finally teach it to someone. My students took that to heart. 85% will be retained if you do that. I wish.
So research has shown that representation matters. Positive representation can be helpful in increasing self-esteem as well as breaking down negative stereotypes. Representation can also provide a diverse perspective, essential in creating an inclusive and equitable educational environment. I embody that representation. As an educator in the K through 12 in higher education setting, I am the voice for educators. As a Latinx and woman of color, I am the advocate for communities that are often marginalized and underrepresented. As a multilingual learner, I vocalize the concerns of over 20% of students who speak over 172 languages. As an educator of ESE, I fight for the rights of students with exceptional abilities. And as a mom, I will roar louder than a mama bear for equity and empowerment of all families of our students. So when it comes to voting for the right person that has the experience and will represent the voices of all, there is no doubt that I am the right choice. Gracias.
Let us thank all of the candidates for their...
I'm sorry.
In closing, thank you, everyone, for attending. I want to say that I represent myself in the community as someone that stands shoulder to shoulder with parents, teachers, and the students to ensure that they get what they need in order to access their education. I'm not here during just election time, I'm here day-to-day, and I have been since my sons have entered school, and I sat at that table in the corner with my sons and saw the isolation and the lack of community in the schools. I have advocated throughout the district, not in a specific zip code, not for a specific tax bracket, all students, all parents, English second language students, Creole, Haitian. I work on Mercy Drive doing psych mental health. I know what it means to assess the needs of a child holistically. I've also been an educator at Orlando Health, educating our doctors and nurses and ensuring that they're able to provide equitable patient-first care. I feel that experience is something that's unique that I can bring to the board. Again, I'm someone that's been in the schools, not just during election time, not just here to garner a vote from a community and saying, I'm here. I'm here day in and day out, working for students, not just my own and all students. And the room may not be packed, not because parents are unengaged, but parents have to work. Parents work two and three jobs to support their households. Parents are at home and unable to get babysitters. So I don't think it's a lack of not wanting to be engaged, I think it's a lack of accessibility to those parents. And as a district, we need to represent all communities, all parents, all different backgrounds, so we can make sure that they do have a seat at the table, and I feel I would be that voice for our community, because I'm willing to put the work in. Thank you.
Let us thank all of the candidates for being here today. And I want to thank the PTA for arranging for this forum so that you could meet your candidates. And with that, we close down for the night. Thank you. If any of you are interested, there is another forum tomorrow night for District 2 at Lake Nona. So if you'd like to travel down there with us, feel free. They have a whole different set of candidates. Thank you very much for coming.